Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for April 11th, 2022. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Here.
Ms. Dozner?
Here.
Mr. Stites?
Present.
Hello?
Ms. Saltine?
Present.
Ms. Hoppy?
Present.
Professor Weber?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
And Ms. Hutchins?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have all eight members present and a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, members, for all being here tonight. You have in your package the study session notes from March 21, 2022. If we have no objections, we will let those stand as presented, so ordered. Do I hear any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will let the agenda stand as prepared. We have some proclamations, so I'll meet you all at the podium. We have a proclamation tonight to designate the week of April 10 through 16, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I would like to invite Joni Malpass with Jeff Com to come up, if she's here, and her associates to accept the presentation.
Thank you all.
One over one another. Plenty of room for everybody. Thank you all for being here tonight. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property; and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Jefferson County Communications Center; and whereas public safety telecommunications communicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services; and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link where our police officers and firefighters, by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety communicators of Jefferson County Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Now therefore, I, Bud Starke, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10 through 16, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, dated this 11th day of April, 2022. I would like to present that to you all, introducing the speaker, and any words that you'd like to leave us with.
Yes.
Okay, please.
First, I'd just like to thank everybody because as Jeff Com's mission statement is to be the lifeline between the community and emergency services, and something we take very seriously, and I think we can all agree, first of all, that these are very strange times, but certainly very challenging times that we're living in. The fact that these are very dynamic individuals, very skilled individuals, that have a key role within the public safety system, it's incredibly important that we have the support of our community, and it's very well accepted, and really happy and proud to be here, to receive that recognition. These are very, not only challenging times for the increased intensity of the calls that we're receiving, the volume of calls that we're receiving, but also a very challenging time in the expectation from the customer, from the citizen, as we transition into the next generation of 911, and the expectations through technology and leaps in technology that the citizens have, and the access to information and the rapid delivery of that information. So this is an evolving position, and as we are redefining and only increasing the importance of the position. So as we acknowledge all of these things during the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week of 2022, we certainly appreciate your support as we transition forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next proclamation is to designate the week of April 24 through 30, 2022, as National Crime Victim Rights Week, and I would like to invite Sin Chapman, the Executive Director of Victims Outreach, to join us, along with Victims Outreach Board Member Dave Pickett, still a commander, I think, or retired commander. Whereas the victims' rights movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that establish essential rights for victims; and whereas the rights of victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights; and whereas supporting victims of crime is crucial to the United States justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals; and whereas the accomplishments of the Victims' Rights Movement, achieved through compassion and collaboration, and built on the courageous advocacy of individual victims and their families across the country, inspire us hope for future progress and greater healing; and whereas the City of Wheat Ridge is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I Bud Starke, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18 through 24, 2020, as Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm our city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals, who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace, and witness thereof, dated this 11th day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, I'm Sin Chapman, I'm the Executive Director at Victim Outreach Incorporated. We're a nonprofit that was established in 1986, so we've been serving the greater area of our eight communities in Jefferson County for quite a while. I could date that back to my son's age. We're very proud of our service to this community and that length of time and our commitment. On behalf of our Board of Directors, my staff, our volunteers, and the victims that we serve, including all of the community that we serve, I want to thank you for this very special recognition tonight. I'd also like to invite you to join us for the 29th Annual Courage Walk that ends the Week of Victims' Rights Awareness Week on Saturday, April 30. That's the 29th Courage Walk. We gather in front of the courthouse in Jefferson County at about 10:00 for a light breakfast and registration, and then the walk steps off at 11:00, and we walk from the front of the courthouse around to the west side, the back of the courthouse where the Courage Garden is for the program. So, hope to see you there. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our next proclamation is in support of Earth Day Celebration, April 22, 2022, the 150th Anniversary National Arbor Day Celebration, April 29, 2022, and I would like to invite Andrew McDonald, our Forestry and Open Space Supervisor for the City of Wheat Ridge here, to accept it. Andrew, thank you very much for being here today.
Nice to meet you.
Whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have the right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity; and whereas we are all caretakers of our planet and have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and resources; and whereas this year marks the 52nd anniversary of the Earth Day Movement, let it be known that the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources; and whereas trees provided one of the first business opportunities in Wheat Ridge in the 1860s; and whereas trees continue to be an important part of the quality of life to community members and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit; and whereas residents, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program; and whereas the City of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 42 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Bud Starke, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Friday, April 22, 2022, as City of Wheat Ridge Earth Day Celebration, encouraging people in Wheat Ridge to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and inspire others to take similar actions. And I also declare Friday, April 29, 2022, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration, and encourage community members and businesses of Wheat Ridge to care for, enjoy, and appreciate trees in your yard and neighborhoods, dated this 11th day of April, 2022. Have a few words.
Good evening. First, I'd like to acknowledge our three full-time forestry staff, Jim Romel, Michael Orliana, and Mark Donnell. Work tirelessly to maintain the city trees, not only in the parks and open space, but also in our right-of-ways and along the streets of Wheat Ridge. So I have a couple of forestry announcements, upcoming events, and things we've been working on. We have a tree sale coming up, so this Saturday, April 16, and next Saturday, April 23, we're hosting our first tree sale in Anderson Park, and we have 200-plus trees, 20 different species, and we'll be selling them at wholesale prices. It's open to all residents of Wheat Ridge and everyone else, so anyone's welcome. It's from 9:00 to 3:00 on those two days, and there's more information about it on the website. They are young trees of 20 different species, and pretty easy, they're small, so the average person can lift one, but it is pickup-only, cashier check-only also. As far as Arbor Day, in honor of Arbor Day, during that event, we'll have our forestry staff on hand to answer questions. They'll be teaching tree identification, distributing informational materials on how to properly plant the trees, and also on invasive species management, specifically as it pertains to Emerald Ash Borer, which is one of our biggest invasive species concerns, as many people are aware. We have a few big tree planting events coming up, most notably on Saturday, May 14, we'll be recruiting volunteers to plant trees along 38th Avenue, and that will be hosted by our forestry staff as well, so the information on how to volunteer will be available on the website. As far as Earth Day, on Friday, April 22, we'll have a group of volunteers from Wheat Ridge Department of Parks and Recreation, maintaining, mulching the gardens and tree rings surrounding the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. Also, as far as volunteering is concerned, we are now taking, the city is now taking over the Tree Steward Volunteer Program, which was formerly run by Institute for Environmental Solutions. So that's an opportunity for anyone to volunteer to help maintain our city trees in the summer, mostly the young trees that we plant. We are planting up to at least 50 trees per year, in addition to our grant-funded tree planting, so we have a lot of young trees going in the ground, and our goal is to have more trees planted than we're losing every year. So the tree stewards mostly are responsible for watering and mulching young trees in our parks and open space. Available now on our city website, on our forestry page, is a link to our Treekeeper Database, which is our forestry inventory database. It's a really great resource for seeing, viewing all of our city trees by species and age and diameter, and that's something we're constantly working to keep updated, but it's a really interesting resource, and now we have a link to that page on our city website. We are offering, for the second year now, a Hazardous Tree Services Grant, which has expanded from last year. Last year was the Hazardous Tree Removal Grant, which offers up to 50% funding to Wheat Ridge residents for pruning, removal, or treatment of hazardous trees. So it's up to $1,500 we offer as a rebate for removal, up to $1,000 for pruning services, and up to $250 for treatment. So information on how to apply for that is also available on the website. And finally, in 2022, we're continuing our Emerald Ash Borer Program. The city will continue to treat high-valued ash trees, which we have many in the city, for Emerald Ash Borer with several different methods, so you'll see our green signage on the city trees around the city, and there's also more information about that on the website. And that's all for forestry updates.
We're going to get a picture. Okay. All right. The public may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under the public's right to speak. We will, we have a sign-up sheet. I have not, I have no one signed up to speak here in the, in the sign-up, but if you are in the, in our council chambers and would like to speak, now is your opportunity to come to the podium, we'll recognize you, and I'm going to ask our clerk, if there's anyone online, you may also speak online to council, or from online to council, and by raising your hand, and I'll ask if anyone has raised their hand in the virtual format, and we will bring them in to speak, and I don't see anyone that's raising their hand. No one has stepped up to speak, so we will close that part of our, our meeting and go to our first agenda item, and Councilor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Mayor, can I ask you this good question? Should I do 1A and 1B together, and then we?
Yes, please read both, read both the title and the at-issue on both of them, and then we'll take a motion on both of them.
Thank you. Resolution number 18-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $100,000 for the addition of two full-time employees for police teleserve positions. At issue, the police department has experienced increased calls for service, which has reduced the amount of unallocated time that patrol officers typically use to apply directed patrol and community policing activities. To address this concern, the police department recommends adding two non-sworn teleserve positions. The teleserve positions will provide a convenient option for members of the community to report non-emergency calls by telephone, thereby freeing up patrol officers for better public engagement, allowing officers to increase proactive patrol and engage in relationship-based policing strategies. And then 1B, resolution number 20-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $71,859 for the addition of one full-time, time-limited employee for housing navigation services. At issue, demand for the city's homelessness navigation program services has continued to steadily rise since it began in December 2020. As this program grows, additional staff support is needed. This full-time housing navigator position will partner with the existing homeless navigator to connect the city's unhoused population to resources and housing through 2026.
Thank you. These are resolutions of the council, they are on our consent agenda. May I have a motion on items 1A and 1B?
I move to approve resolution number 20-2022. Do I need to say a different one, too? Do I need to say both of them?
You can just say 1A and 1B.
1A and 1B.
Thank you.
A resolution...
That's all.
Okay.
We have a second by Mr. Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council?
We have an electrical problem, Mr. Mayor, one moment, please.
Okay.
I need to ask you to vote again, please. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Councilor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce resolution number 19-2022, a resolution approving a major subdivision plat on property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, located at 5800 through 5990 West 38th Avenue, case number WS2102, Spaloon Redivision. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision for property located at 5800 through 5990 West 38th Avenue to replat and consolidate 23 lots into three lots, and to establish clear title for existing conditions on property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing, it is quasi-judicial. I am going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this item, by speaking on this item, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Stephanie Stevens is here this evening.
Ms. Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Stephanie Stevens. I'm a planner in the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number WS2104, which is a request for approval of a replat to consolidate 23 lots into three lots on property-zoned mixed-use neighborhood. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. The properties within the City of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The site is located on the south side of West 38th Avenue between Fenton and Harland Streets. It consists of three addresses, 5800, 5900, and 5990 West 38th Avenue. There is currently one commercial building at each address, all built in the 1950s. The site was platted in 1952 as the Fred L. Spaloon subdivision. There are currently easements that run along the northern border of the site that encompass the city sidewalk and landscaping, as well as utilities and signs, and all of those are proposed to be maintained. The property is zoned mixed-use neighborhood, as are most of the nearby properties along West 38th Avenue. This property was included in the city-initiated rezoning in 2011, which occurred from Sheridan to Wadsworth Boulevard approximately. West 38th Avenue is a primary arterial road, and most of the nearby uses are commercial. Further south and north of the site, there does lie residential zoning. The lot configuration is appropriate for existing conditions and could also accommodate future redevelopment if that were to ever occur. Subdivision regulations are found in Article 4 of the zoning code. A plat is a technical document that reconfigures lots, tracts, and parcels for sale and development. It removes, creates, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate right-of-way, and it allows the city to evaluate civil construction documents. As a reminder, a subdivision plat does not affect the zoning or permitted uses on the property. It enables development already permitted by the current zoning. It also does not look at site or building design. For this project, building design and placement is already in place. The applicant is requesting approval of a replat to consolidate 23 lots into three lots to align with existing development, resulting in each of the three existing buildings being contained on one lot each. The reason for the replat is to clear the title for sale of one of the buildings. This request is considered a major subdivision based on the number of lots that are involved, which requires public hearing before Planning Commission and City Council. This is an excerpt from the plat document, which is also provided in the staff report. Previous lot lines are shown in a blue color, and the newly proposed lot lines are shown in red. New easements are shown in purple. Each of the three proposed lots are logically configured to align with existing conditions, including buildings, parking areas, and access. The lots are rectangular, except for Lot 1, which is proposed to be an angled boundary line on the east side to align with the existing access. Both of the existing right-of-way widths along Harland and Fenton Streets do not meet city standards, so we are requesting right-of-way dedication as reflected on the plat. The replat maintains all existing easements and proposes two new easements for utilities, a small easement on Lot 1 for gas meters, and a larger easement between Lots 2 and 3 for water. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed our internal review. There are no remaining comments on this application, and the plat is found to be approvable. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners and residents within a 600-foot radius, and the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. One phone call was received inquiring about the proposal, but did not express opposition. No further comments were received. So ultimately, staff has concluded the request meets the subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property. It will allow for... It will allow for the sale of one of the existing buildings. Planning Commission recommended approval at a hearing on March 17. And staff is also recommending approval of this request. This concludes my presentation. The applicant does not plan to present tonight, but we are both here for questions should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to a public comment. If there's any members from the public who would like to speak on this, now is your opportunity. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you are here in the hall, in the city chambers and have not signed, you may speak at this time. And I will ask the clerk to see if anyone is online with their hands raised to speak. I don't see anyone coming forward in council chambers or in lines. We will close our public's right to speak on this item and go to questions from council. Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question. What kind of access easements are in place for all three lots?
So they don't have actual shared access easement. There is an alley behind that is being maintained, and then they direct all of their access off of 38th.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask which building is one that's going to be up for sale?
Yes, it is the middle building, so the address is 5900, Lot 2, which is shown in the subdivision plat, and it had the cabinet shops.
Yeah. Thank you.
Add one. Any further questions from council? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Hoppe, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 19-2022, a resolution approving a major subdivision on property located at 5800 through 5990 West 38th Avenue and zoned mixed-use neighborhood for the following reasons. One, City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. Three, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. Four, the requirements of Article IV subdivision regulations of the zoning and development code have been met.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Weaver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. We will now go to City Managers Matters. Manager Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple updates. You may have noticed, I mentioned this last week, but CDOT is working on the bridge, I-70 Bridge, over 32nd Avenue, so be careful when you're driving out there. They are having some closures overnight and some lane shifts on the interstate itself, but the one bridge span is coming down, and you'll see a pile of concrete on the exit off I-70, but I'm excited for that to get completed. But also, another construction project in the city, Wadsworth, is moving along fairly well, very well, actually, knock on wood, thanks to all the residents and the businesses for their patience. It's going to be another year or so before it's completed, but we are seeing increased activity coming up here. The retaining wall at the north end will be coming down, and underground utilities are going in. There's going to be some single lane closures, but there's always going to be at least two lanes open on Wadsworth. By the end of the month, we will be shifting traffic west for approximately one year, so that'll be the first major shift in traffic. But again, most of the lanes will remain open. The good news is, we've finalized all of our right-of-way acquisitions and settlements, so we're all done with that. And we are hoping to find funding for Phase 2. We did submit to both Senator Hickenlooper and Bennett's office and Congressman Pearl Motors' office last week and today, requests for additional funding for Phase 2. So keep your fingers crossed on that, and we hope we will see some additional funds so that we can start Phase 2 even before Phase 1 is done. And Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, Ms. Scheck has a quick update and request from City Council she would like to...
Okay. Ms. Scheck.
Thank you, Mr. Goff, for giving me a moment. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Allison Scheck, Administrative Services Director. I'm asking for your consensus to move forward with the addition of a new full-time human resources business partner to our organization. There are several reasons for this request, and that explain why the current four-person team right now is unsustainable. We've discussed this at previous meetings, but the great resignation that is having a big effect on all industries and sectors is having a big effect on us, just like our peers. We're experiencing higher turnover than ever in an extremely aggressive and competitive hiring market. We estimate that our turnover rate will be between 16% and 20% this year. In 2019, pre-pandemic, we made 49 hires, and in the first three months of 2022, we've already completed 22 hires. And this doesn't account for the struggles that we're having with part-time and seasonal workers in order to be able to open our pool this summer. So in order that we can fill critical job functions, the job market conditions require a more aggressive approach to hiring with far-reaching postings and more aggressive strategies, and this requires, it simply requires much more time from our HR staff. The job market will require that we complete a compensation analysis again this year. We've talked about this at various budgets. We usually complete that every two years. If we don't do that again this year, we're at real risk of falling further behind our competitors, our neighboring jurisdictions. Again, this is a big lift for HR, and for the same reason, we'll need to undertake a benefits review as well this year. There are several other big policy issues that we must address this year, including Colorado's paid family leave program, and you'll be hearing more about this from us this summer. There have been some other state mandated leave programs which also have increased the administrative burden, and will continue to do so long time for the HR staff. So those are some of the reasons why we're struggling right now. Our current staffing includes an HR manager, two senior HR business partners, and an HR technician. I've taken a very good look at their plates. They are very full, and they can continue to perform at a high level. There's just not enough capacity to handle the current needs of our organization. I myself have added some tasks, HR tasks, to my plate, and that's great, and that's why I'm here. And to do so long-term again is unsustainable. By prioritizing current funding, we've actually added the help of a part-time seasonal worker. She's someone that actually happens to work at our rec center and has a lot of experience in the league. Poor Karen, we just keep going after really great staff from Parks and Recreation on the admin services side, but she has a legal background and is doing some really great work right now in recruiting and policy a few hours a week because that's what we have funding for. And this has been a huge resource, but it's just not enough, and we'd like to make that full-time. So we have considered all kinds of alternatives. We've looked at the costs of contracting some of this work out, and again, at this point, this is my request and recommendation. In looking at typical staffing levels, Wheat Ridge is indeed understaffed. So an average HR staffing for an organization our size is about 3.4 HR staff per 100 full-time employees, and we're at 1.58. And when we look at surrounding municipalities with a similar FTE count, they also appear to be understaffed, but we are even further understaffed. So these cities have an HR staffing that's closer to or above two HR staff per 100 employees. That's just the typical benchmark for HR staffing. And adding an employee will bring our HR staffing level to 1.97 per 100. So we're recommending this as an HR business partner, so it's a little level below our senior business partners but above the technician, really able to focus on recruiting, number one, recruiting, so we can help the chief and Karen, and also policy work. That's where we need to be spending some of our time. And this allows the whole team to focus on the needs of the organization, including the comp study, the benefits review, anti-harassment training, implicit bias training, handling employee relations issues, and frankly, several other priorities. Estimated annual costs are about $78,000 for salary and benefits. For the remainder of this year, we'll need approximately $50,500 for benefit salary and technology. We do have sufficient funds to cover this expense, and with revenue showing continued strength, that will be the case for some time, although it's a position that I commit to reevaluating when there's attrition within the division. It's very tough for me to come outside of the budget. I have a lot of respect for the budget process. I was telling that to the city manager. It's hard for me to sit here and ask for this, but at this point, I'm very concerned that we're at risk of losing some really good staff in the HR team, simply because it's a very, very stressful environment right now to work in when we just don't have the capacity, so I thought we would ask. So again, I'd like to thank the city manager for giving me a moment. And again, I'm looking for your consensus to move forward, and should that occur this evening, we'll prepare materials for your review at the April 25 regular council meeting. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. I will open it up for questions from council. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward to add an HR business partner to our HR department, and knowing that they will come back with a budget supplemental request.
Well, in favor, raise your hands. Looks like we have consensus to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, that's it for me, but I just want to thank council, too. As Alex said, we don't like to bring these things up last minute like this, but it is very critical with the changing job market, so we appreciate your support on this.
Okay. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight? Okay, we're moving right along. We'll go to elected officials matters, and I'll start with our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing new this evening.
Thank you so much. Counselor Hutchinson.
I'd just like to say Happy Easter to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nosler Beck.
My microphone's been on this whole time. I didn't know that. I don't have anything this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I was talking to the owner at the Suites X Cleaners, Success Cleaners, northwest of 38th and Wadsworth, and she mentioned that the police have been responsive to any matters that have come up and that her fellow shop owners kind of look out for each other in that development, which I thought was really great. I'd like to encourage all the neighbors to kind of keep a watch out for each other and appreciate the dog walkers that I see in the neighborhood because they kind of keep an eye out for everybody, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to wish everyone a Happy Easter, and I am very grateful to the city for putting on the Easter egg hunt this last Saturday. My kids had a lot of fun. I think there was a little bit of disappointment amongst the community because at 11, some people were getting there, and the event was getting cleaned up because I think we ran out of eggs. It was a very popular event, but my younger son especially really enjoyed hunting for the eggs, and I made sure that they were going after the ones that weren't just thrown across the lawn. I was like, you're older, you got to go look for them now. So thank you to Parks and Rec for putting that event on.
Life just gets tougher and tougher, doesn't it? Okay. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. We have a Regenerate Wheat Ridge program at Happiness Gardens this Wednesday, and you can sign up for that on the Rooted in Fun site. And the tree sale is going to be super exciting, so I hope people can come out for that. That's the first time Wheat Ridge has done that, so I'm really looking forward to that. The last thing, these are all environmental and farm-related things today. There is a pretty severe avian flu that has been introduced to Colorado, and we have a lot of backyard chickens, and there isn't much you can do because it seems to be spread from wild... fowl, thank you, flying overhead and predators. But things like chicken swaps and exposing animals between yards and between flocks is problematic, and it's a really severe flu. So if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to call me, but if you see symptoms of the flu, the State, the Department of Agriculture for Colorado has asked you to call them and let them know of any cases that you see.
Thank you. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Sustainable Applewood for doing a fantastic e-recycling day on Saturday, and they held that at Color Strand, did a phenomenal job. And also say Happy Easter, and if you guys are shopping for things for your Easter baskets, make sure you buy local. If you can find it, buy it in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing, and I'll be asking, I'll be requesting action from the council, but we have been seeing, and it's been happening sooner than it did in years past, our unhoused neighbors will congregate in one spot, they'll get kicked out of that spot, they'll be congregating in another spot, and we have really this tag team between the I-70 and Kipling Corridor and then kind of like near the Wadsworth and 38th corridor. And I know that we have some great things happening with our homeless navigator, and then tonight, our housing navigator, but in the meanwhile, I think the mayor and I have talked, and the mayor supports me in requesting this, I would really like to ask for consensus to direct staff to come back to us with some information and resources on some potential solutions, including, not exclusive to, but including safe parking lots and safe camping options that we could potentially do in our community. This, our unhoused neighbors, we see it in the summer. It gets worse and worse in the summer, and this really can give us also an opportunity to find some long-term solutions and give our housing and homeless navigators opportunity to go and really work with our homeless population. So I'm open for discussion, but I will be asking for consensus to direct staff to come back to us with some potential information and action.
Questions for Counselor Hoppe on this item? Don't see any questions?
Great. I'd like to ask for consensus to direct staff to come back to council with information and resources to help earth our homeless population.
Looks like we have consensus on that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Holteam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everyone else had short lists. I have a long list. Buckle up. So first of all, I just am excited. This Saturday, Counselor Ohm and I are hosting a District 2 meeting at Randall Park from 3:00 to 4:30-ish. The weather is supposed to be very favorable to gathering in one of our lovely District 2 parks, so we hope to see people there. And yeah, looking forward to it with Counselor Ohm. A couple of other things. I was riding my bike and took one of my favorite shortcuts through what used to be known as the Yukon Court Gardens and is now, I think, called the Outpost. And I was just so delighted to see that that little community has put in eight raised-bed gardens for their residents that will kick off this spring. So I love seeing our communities investing in more opportunities to grow local food. I also want to just mention, Counselor Member Weaver mentioned the Regenerate Wheat Ridge event this Wednesday. It's actually going to be held at the rec center and not at Happiness Gardens because it's supposed to be a little chilly in the morning. So if you go to the garden, I think someone will be there to redirect you, but you'll miss the good part of the class, which is always the first five minutes. And then I just want to recognize my peers up here. I don't see a single plastic water bottle, so nobody has to pony up any dollars for that. So it's great to be celebrating Earth Month. Every day should be Earth Day, but I appreciate the commitment this month to not have any plastic water bottles on the dais, and I think that's my list. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the residents who came to Coffee with the Mayor on Saturday morning. It was a great event. We had some really good discussion, and I appreciate you coming and bringing your questions and your insights into our city. We will be here next week at a study session at 6:30 PM, and I want to, once again, let everybody know that as school gets closer to getting out, and before it does, the weather is nice. We'll have children outside playing, I hope, and getting some good exercise, and please be careful as you drive around our city. Drive slowly and enjoy the great place that we live. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned.